Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March Meeting of the East Central Independent School District. Board of Trustees, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Barrientos to call the role, please.
Thal Brazil?
Present.
Victor Garza?
Here.
James Mulkey?
Here.
Monique Presses?
Here.
John Massengill?
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge, Mr. Toscano, please.
We have Ms. Worsback, Principal of Pecan Valley Elementary School, and a bunch of lions. A bunch of them.
All right, good evening, President Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and members of the Board. We are very pleased and honored that Pecan Valley gets to open up our Board meeting tonight. And so, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you our students that will be leading us in our prayer and our pledge. Our prayer is written by Mr. Schob. He's one of our former PV teachers, very famous in the PV world, and it will be read by Allison Castro. And our students who will be leading us in our pledge will be Sofia Gonzalez, Allison Castro, and William Kinderconnect. And so, please rise.
Dear Jesus, we come to you with thanks and praise for all that you are. We thank you for the life you have given us and the gifts and talents that you have blessed us with. We ask for your special blessing over the East Central community this evening. We pray that you will continue to provide your protection over all of our schools, students and families, staff members, administrators, school board members, and first responders. Please help us to continue to grow in our learning and understanding that we may bring honor to you, our God. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
If you'll please remain standing, she's going to say in Spanish. Querido Jesus, venimos a ti con agradecimiento y alabanza por todo lo que eres. Te damos gracias por la vida que nos has dado y por los dones y talentos con los que nos has bendecido. Pedimos una bendición especial sobre la comunidad de East Central esta noche. Oramos para que continúe brindando su protección a nuestras escuelas, estudiantes y familias, miembros del personal, administradores, miembros de la junta escolar y personal de primeros auxilios. Por favor, ayúdanos a continuar creciendo en nuestro aprendizaje y comprensión para que podamos honrarlo nuestro Dios. En tu nombre oramos, amen.
Amen.
If you will remain standing for the pledges. You're going to hold it with your left hand, right hand on your heart.
Presents to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prometo bienestar a la frontera entre Estados Unidos y América. Y el pueblo que representa una nación a ti Dios, invisible y inesciable para todos. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible. Prometo bienestar a ti Texas, un lechero a ti Dios, único e inescible.
Thank you, you may be seated. I'm going to go ahead and hand the microphone over to Ms. Reed. Ms. Reed is going to go ahead and introduce our performance and our performers.
Hi. Today, we are pleased to be performing a remake of an old song, "Breaking Up Is Hard To Do." But, you know, they're young, so we're doing "Waking Up Is Hard To Do." In second grade, we have Sofia Gonzalez, Eva Pacheco, and Brooklyn Tapia, and Stormy Soto. In third grade, we have Corbin Casas and Allison Castro.
And Ariel Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
Alexandra!
The really sad part is, none of the children are surprised by this. Alexandra Martinez in third grade, I'm sorry, I forgot to write it down.
You're nodding your windows. Step. Corbin, step. Step. Step forward, one step. All of you.
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 That's the time to rise and shine. Don't you cry, don't be blue. Waking up is hard to do. Just brush your teeth and then get dressed. When you comb your hair, you'll look the best. Now you know it's really true, waking up is hard to do. Say the waking up is hard to do. Wear a smile, don't you be blue. Just wipe the sin from your eyes. Instead of going back to bed, you've got to stretch your face today. Just listen to the birdies sing and the flowers that await the spring. Rise and shine, your dream is through. Waking up is hard to do. Say the waking up is hard to do. Wear a smile, don't you be blue. Just wipe the sin from your eyes. Instead of going back to bed, you've got to stretch your face today. Just listen to the birdies sing and the flowers that await the spring. Now you know it's really true, waking up is hard to do. Do-do-do-do-down, dooby-do-dow-down. Comma, comma, down, dooby-do-dow-down. Comma, comma, down, dooby-do-dow-down. Waking up is hard to do.
And I would also like to thank Ms. Kristi Kinshue, who learned the guitar just for us, the version.
So, a big shout out to Ms. Reed and Ms. Kinshue, obviously, and thank you so much for our students. And if we have any of our students' family members, if they could please stand so you can be recognized as well this evening. And I also know that we have some staff members here as well that came to support our students. So, staff members, if you are here, please rise or give a big wave, and so you can recognize yourselves. And so, thank you, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Very good, very good. There's some great things going on over at Pecan Valley, obviously.
I will say one thing for that little girl that read. She reads better than I do. I can read Spanish, but not that well. Because I haven't practiced it. She did a fantastic job. And I like that version of the song better than the one I know.
So, if you'll give us a few minutes of your time, soon as we get through with the awards, we'll let those of you who need to go home and do homework or grade homework go, and then we'll continue on with our business. So, with that, we'll move to awards and recognitions. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir Trustees, East Central Community, it's an exciting evening, as we are going to be recognizing all of our Campus Teachers of the Year, along with those who are going to be representing our entire district as our District Teachers of the Year. So, very exciting evening. Ms. Coles?
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, President Bryant, members of the Board. It is our pleasure tonight to recognize our Teachers of the Year. Great teachers are the soul of an enlightened society, and we entrust in them the most precious thing we know in life, our children. Most of us owe much of who we are and what we've achieved to great teachers, because of their fundamental commitment to our success. We can all name that great teacher who changed our lives, a teacher who inspired us. Tonight, we're honoring our Teachers of the Year, East Central's best of the best, who represent all the hard-working, dedicated, selfless educators across the district who strive to do more and be more for our children every day. We're so proud to honor you here, because we know you change lives every day, and you make the world a better place, one student at a time. We thank you for everything that you do. The first person that we'll be calling up, from BCLC, BCLC's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Cornelius George. And Teachers of the Year, whenever you've taken your individual picture, if you don't mind stepping over that direction, because at the end, we'll have everybody come up and take one group shot. Teacher of the Year, from Tradition Elementary, Ms. Yvonne Rue. Next, from Pecan Valley Elementary, Teacher of the Year, Heather Jost. From Sinclair Elementary, Teacher of the Year, Alma Cornejo. From Highland Forest, Teacher of the Year, Maria Gamboa. From Salado Intermediate, or Intermediate School, I'm sorry, still Intermediate School, Legacy Middle School, Teacher of the Year, and the District Nominee for the HEB Award We're going to recognize our Heritage Teacher of the Year, but she's actually out on maternity leave, so she's not here tonight, but that was Courtney Crawford Williams. Next, from Oak Crest, Teacher of the Year, Janet Hernandez Ayers. Next, Harmony Elementary's Teacher of the Year, and the Elementary Teacher of the Year for the District, Megan Frazier. Megan will represent the district at Region 20 and compete against other regional elementary teachers of the year from other districts. Next, East Central High School Teacher of the Year, and the District Teacher of the Year, Mr. Tim McMeans. Mr. McMeans will also be giving the address at the convocation this year to all of our staff members, so. Finding him, he better start writing now. If y'all could all come back up for a group picture, if y'all could all come back up. Wait, stay, Mr. T, please stay. Oh, probably not. We know that they would not be so amazing without their awesome and amazing families, so if you are a family member of one of these amazing educators, please stand up and be We appreciate you for sharing your loved ones with us. Thank y'all very much. Great job.
As promised, we're now going to take a 10-minute recess and let those of you who need to leave, leave, and then we'll get on with our business. But we appreciate you being here this night and being here for our awards. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started again, and move through the rest of our agenda. Item number four, Public Comments. We have no one who has signed up for Public Comments. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, Superintendent's Report, Item A, EIC Local.
Trustees, if you would take a look with me in your electronic packet on page nine, you'll see a copy of EIC Local, as it currently exists, with some revisions for your consideration. This will be your first reading of this particular policy, and we'll bring this back to you next month for your consideration. This particular policy speaks to academic achievement, specifically, class ranking. And so, why we're bringing this to you for amendment consideration is that, first of all, there's some antiquated language around grade weights. For example, students who take a dual-credit course get 12 GPA credit points. They take an AP course, they get 12. If it's a pre-AP course, it's 10, etc. So, we just updated that language. The weights didn't change, just the language is changing. But most specifically, historically, when our students take high school courses in middle school, they can earn high school credit, but the risk they take is that it starts to count in their GPA. And that worked well for us, but this past year is the first year that every single eighth grade student actually takes algebra. Previous, it was a choice. Some took algebra, many did not. And the reason that we're doing that is it gives kids an additional opportunity to pass that into course exam, which is one of the required courses that has an EOC exam for graduation. So, it gives our kids an advantage of an additional opportunity. And so, for that reason, since they don't have a choice, staff is recommending that courses taken in middle school for high school credit still enable students to earn high school credit, but that it will not be calculated into their GPA. So, their transcripts look exactly the same, course credit can go towards graduation, but it will not hurt or help them in their GPA. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions, provide any additional information that you may need over the next month, but again, we'll bring this back to you next month for your consideration.
Item B, Personnel Report.
Trustees, this is on page 12, in your electronic packet this month, and again, as is usually the case during this time of year, not much activity at all, the very little activity in there, as is always the case. Just let me know if you want additional, more specific information, and we'll get that to you. But we will start to see this picking up into the spring months.
Item C, Transportation Update.
Trustees, at this time, I'd like to call our Director of Transportation up, Mr. Don Jerk, as well as our Coordinator of Transportation, Ms. Doty Young, to provide the Board an update on the goals and progress of our Transportation Department.
All right. Good evening, President Bryant, School Board members, Superintendent Toscano. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our Goals Update for you guys tonight, everybody out there as well. First off, thank you, again, this year with your funding and your approval, we've been able to purchase six new buses through Thomas. It's five brand-new buses, regular red, and one special needs bus. Regular red run about 95,000 a bus, and the special needs run about 98,000. So, thank you very much for your continued support there. We were able to spend another additional, about 18,000, to basically round out the camera systems. We go through Angel Trax. When I first got there, three years ago, we were kind of scattered. We had three different brands. Now, they're all the same brand, they're just kind of a little bit different models. So, we've got the new and improved. So, pretty much, we're almost right at 100% of our fleet that we have that. A big, big piece of what we've done this year is we have purchased through Sanovia, the school bus GPS. So, all of our route buses, all 121 route buses have GPS, which helps us amazingly in the office, performance-wise, communication-wise, and it also works in conjunction with the product called Here Comes a Bus, we presented about this last year, and thank y'all for approving that. That's, people, our parents are able to have it on their phones, on their computers, they get notifications of when their kiddos are about to be picked up. So, great, great product, so it's been a really, really big asset to our department. We have a new lift in the shop, which helps immensely with our services for all of our white fleet that we've been able to purchase this year as well, in our continued efforts to upgrade the shop. And then, we're able to, with Mr. Selby's help and everybody else up there, and Judah and everybody really across the board, maintenance, we've got our Base Two portable out there, so we've got Base Two, a tradition, open and running as part of our satellite station. So, again, a lot of continued positive growth for our department this year, so thank you guys very much for that. Doty's going to go over the next two slides regarding performance and culture climate.
Good evening. Sorry, a little loud. For our performance, one of our goals was to have our DOT run our routes at 98.5% on time with all of our routes, and keep communication and improve that with our campuses and our parents and community. We have run, as of February 22nd, was when we updated that last, we had run 20,330 routes at that point in time. Our efficiency rate at that time was 98.9% running those on time. Our attendance was also something that we wanted to work on this year. Our goal for DOT was 95%, and as of February 22nd, our achievement at that point was 94.3%. That wasn't quite our goal, but we are definitely working on that with our culture climate, with our staff. We wanted to improve that with quarterly celebrations with that staff and trainings. Part of that is working on having recognition with these employees and having trainings with them quarterly. We have perfect attendance and recognize their years of service, recognize Employees of the Month, safety, and their attendance, and all of the accomplishments that they have made with that. And again, training has been a big part of that.
All right, so fiscal responsibility, we work with the very high budget and with all the goodies that we get to be in charge of on a daily basis. So, as most departments, when they get a period here, we want to try to give back 3%. That's fairly easy for us, because we, at the end of every year, we're able to, through our Route Services report, get reimbursed about a million three, a million four every year, which kind of goes back into our budget and helps us there. But we also want to make sure that, from our inventory, our stock inventory, which was the main piece that we really, really keep track of too, for the shop-wise, that we're going to finish up with no more of a variance of 1.5%. We've been able to really, really implement processes over our three years there, or the last three years, using Service Finder, having quarterly budget meetings to ever making sure that we're on track and that we're going to, you know, not finishing red in any of the areas. And Stevie and Judy have been instrumental, you know, in helping us with those areas and making sure that we're on track there. The piece of slide that I'm really, really proud of, and I want to thank everyone here too, because this is a complete team effort, are our ratings for this year. As you can see, they're the highest that they've been, and I know when I first got here, I think we just polled the principals, thought it was a great idea last year to where we kind of expanded that, because we don't just serve the principals, we serve everybody in the district, and not just us, but, you know, everybody, all the auxiliary departments in the district. So, they are high, and you look at the communication and the cooperation pieces are highest, with our biggest area of growth in communication, and that's just an area of focus that I know I was tasked with when I got there, when Mr. Toscano brought us over there, and again, it's working in conjunction with campus administrators and within the systems that we've been granted to continue to make those effective. So, very, very happy with those, but they're not at 100, so we still have work to do. Moving forward, we, you know, as you guys know, we're going to be having the Leadership Academy next year, and dual-language at Salado. We'll have Oak Crest with the dual-language as a main dual-campus, or dual-language campus there. So, we are at it again, busy, very, very busy, as we get ready to start those routes. Those meetings have actually been going on for about two months already now. We've just met again today about that. We've been already meeting with Meredith, I think, since December for our summer program. It's not summer school, right, Meredith? It's EC Summer Programming. And then, just we'll have our budget, our budget stuff coming up for our meetings for next year. Looking at getting summer interns again this year, as, you know, a way to kind of get back to the kids within our community, that can come and help work for us, and then we'll move into some campus discipline training as well towards the end of the year, and maybe over the summer. That concludes our presentation. I want to thank you, and field, any questions, if you have any?
Anyone have any questions?
Have we had to plan for kind of advertising or increasing our, I know we always need bus drivers, but with those campuses being added, with the Leadership Academy, and are we looking at prices there, or are we able to?
So, right now, I know we actually, we have some magnets, and we have signage right now for our pre-K and for our kindergarten registration. We were able to develop some really good partnerships, and these people turned it around and got it done within like a week, you know, as far as banners and stuff like that, so if that's an area that we want to, we can go to.
Mr. Jerk, with regard to number of drivers, though, and being fully staffed...
Mr. Jerk, with regard to number of drivers though, and being fully staffed, I think you're referring to whether you anticipate the need for any additional routes due to the changes in boundaries and such?
So currently, right now, as of our meeting today, we will have routes that we already have within the Harmony Attendance Zone for next year. That there, we have a couple of dual-language routes already. We envision, we also have some routes in the Harmony area that strictly take the fourth and fifth graders from Harmony to Oak Crest as of right now, right? So we'll be able to kind of eat up those buses and turn them into dual-language buses there. The only pieces that we might see a need for more is because Tradition right now is about to lose a lot of students with dual-language, that are dual-language students there, the possibility of them, number-wise, are all gonna, we're gonna have to transport a big, big, large area up there in the Tradition area as coming back to Oak Crest. So those are all numbers right now. We've kind of got final numbers where we feel comfortable with right now to where we can start geocoding them and doing all the fancy stuff in Trans Finder. So right now, the goal is not to have any extra. If we do, we're maybe looking at about two to three, you know? I mean, but it's gonna have to be, it'll be a deliberate process. And right now, currently, we're, to answer your other question, we're about two drivers short in the morning, on the morning staff. And then our PM roster, we're about five, about five drivers short right now. I will tell you this, we've, I know the data on this as well. We work really close in conjunction with our training staff. We have conducted fifty-six interviews this year and we've been able to bring on twenty new staff members just since the beginning of the year. You have, kind of times change sometimes, you lose some drivers sometimes and then we gain them. But we do have a training program where we're getting people onboard and look at applications every single day, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item D, custodial update?
I'd like to call Mr. Judah Lawrence up to the podium to give us the board an update on our custodial department progress with regard to reaching their goals. I believe this one's in your electronic packet. It may have scanned in sideways, so you might have to turn around or... Okay, this works too. Well, maybe not.
So thank you very much, members of the board, Mr. Toscano, other staff members in attendance. If I could get this to show, there we go. So there are three areas that our department set goals in, in the area of performance. We wanted to emphasize customer service, you know, throughout the district, enhancing job performance. High levels of disinfecting practices, leading to a clean, safe, and healthy learning environment. In the area of culture and climate, we wanted to work towards becoming a high reliability department with focus on consistency, contingency, and promoting a safety-oriented custodial team. In the area of fiscal responsibility, we wanted to accomplish that by optimizing opportunities to find cost-effective methods for procurement and emphasizing preventative maintenance practices of all district resources. Update. So how do we feel like we're accomplishing those things? Where in the area of performance, we've implemented department inspections that are performed, they're reoccurring. They aren't set on any kind of scheduled dates, so it's all kind of spontaneous. We do follow-ups on the findings from those. We've partnered with Germ Blast. They come out twice a year servicing our district. And they also have the capability and have addressed any outbreaks, anything immediate outbreaks that we've had. Any documents of multiple people getting sick at a campus, so they will come out practically at a moment's notice, you know, with just a few days' notice and they will come out and service that campus. We use our e-miss machines. We were able to purchase a second backpack e-miss machine as well as an additional e-miss machine was donated to us. A handheld device was donated to us with the help of our Superintendent, Mr. Toscano. We've hit some challenges in our staffing department and maintaining, you know, vacant positions. We are trying to sustain our custodial substitute pool, fill vacancies in those short and long-term absences that we're having. And continue to have a strong cleaning and disinfecting training program so that those, when we have that turnover, that all of our new employees come in and receive all the training that they need to be, you know, assets to our custodial department. We continue to do safe schools training. There's always on-the-job training. We have yearly training. We work with our head custodians during the Alice and Safety Training. During every head custodial meeting, we go over the navigate scenarios as well as stop-to-bleed training. That's for all our head custodians. And we continue to work and modify schedules as needed and we have gap time assignments as well. For culture and climate, we have expanded our communication platforms through email, you know, our district website, our page on it. We do onsite visits. I do monthly meetings as well as Ms. Cavassos with our principals and our site supervisors. We have our newsletter as well as with our head custodians. We do case study, leading, leadership growth to grow our head custodians into becoming that onsite leaders that we need. We ensure that all of our staff are safety ambassadors and that they use PPEs when at all necessary. We've seen a reduction in our workers' comp claims over the past three school years. The numbers are right there. We went from thirteen claims in twenty sixteen, seventeen to two claims so far in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as this report was generated. Our goal for fiscal responsibility is to return three percent at a minimum of unused funds. We're on track to do that. We're doing that by using preventative maintenance on all of our equipment, making sure that we are taking advantage of any warranties that our new equipment has when they do need repairs, that we're getting those done, you know, while the warranty is still valid. And we're piloting for equipment and also chemicals to make sure we're using the most cost-effective products possible. So we had a goal, our scoreboard goal. These are our visits that we're doing to campuses, whether we're meeting with head custodians or just walking through, meeting with custodians, just meeting with staff. We had a goal of fifty visits per week between I and the Executive Director of Custodial Department. We kind of ambitiously, at one point, were racking up about ninety-one visits and on average, so that almost doubled what we had set a goal for. The district survey, that was completed. We got numbers from those. We do have some areas that we did increase in. There are some that we had a decrease in as well. The service, we did get a two-point-nine percent decrease as well as cooperation. Whenever I see those numbers, I really would like feedback, you know, from those people that I meet, you know, why are we, what can we do to increase that? What can we do to grow and be better as a department? There were some comments, you know, that were left. And mainly, it's about, you know, it has to do with our staffing and it has to do with the cleanliness. So I know that once we get our staffing back and we have those well-trained staffed people, that we can have better numbers hopefully on our next survey. So the next level of work, what are we looking forward to do in the future? As far as customer service, we always want to keep our presence on the sites, very active. So we want to increase our onsite visitation, gonna increase inspections as well as the follow-up on those inspections and assessments. As far as communication, we want to make sure that we continue to communicate well with our head custodians and then from, on the custodial level as well, and increase our leadership with our head custodians at the campus level. With cleaning and disinfecting, we want to make sure that we're enhancing our assignment schedules as we are adding new square footage and new buildings. We want to make sure that we're accounting for that, making sure we're staffed and that we have all the necessary tools that we need to accomplish that goal. We want to make sure that we remain a high reliability department. We want to count on our, being consistent on any contingencies, doing the preventive maintenance on our equipment and providing as much training that is needed. We want to continue to work with Germ Blast. As far as staffing, training, and safety, we want to enhance our new employee orientation. We have some ideas about that that we're kicking around. We want to keep our frontline supervision strong. We want to develop them, coach them as much as we can. Staffing and requirement needs, we want to always review those. As new facilities rise up and renovations and additions, we want to make sure that we're taking care of those new areas as we should. And we want to continue doing safety scenarios and reviews for our district leadership at our campuses. That's all I have for the Custodial Department.
Any questions?
On your survey, do you do that yearly? I might have missed at the beginning. Is it yearly or?
Yes, ma'am. It's yearly.
We'll do a mid-year, mid-year survey and then we'll do a district-wide survey as well at the end of the year. But that particular service, survey that is intra-district is once a year in the middle of the year.
Yes, ma'am. And that's where we create our goals from. We see where the need is and see how we can tailor our goals to make sure that we're growing in the areas that we need to grow in.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Moving on to item E, construction update. Mr. Selb?
Mr. Toscano, President Bryant, board members, this is our monthly update on the two thousand and sixteen bond program. We'll start off, as we always do, a tradition, lovely photo. We continue to have them working on the punch list. They've been able to make some fairly good inroads into that, although they are not complete. We have talked to them. There is the expectation for that to be done by the end of this month. They also have a variety of warranty items that they are working on and often we confuse those and or blend them together, which in fact, they are two separate things legally, but it doesn't really matter. If it's not working, we want it fixed. Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts, same scenario there. We continue to work with them on those punch list items. The actual original punch list items are dwindling down to only a few, but there are still some things they need to do. There's some warranty items. We're working with them on some, making sure that that's completed. The goal was for them to get that completed by the end of the month. I believe they will get the vast majority done. There are some items that have been identified in mechanical system that they've had to order parts for. That probably won't get done by the end of March just because the parts won't be in until the end of March. But we're continuing to work with them to move forward. At Salado, we have Phase Four well underway. Wing B is dried in. They've done the majority of the sheet rock has been installed. They're doing flip and taping right now. They are also working on the mechanical or the MEP technology or doing their work on that and will be continuing on the Wing B phase as well. Wing D, they're almost complete there. They've completed all except for some of the technology connections and installation. Ceiling tile's done. All the projection installation is complete as you can see. They've started their own internal punch list, which is what you should be doing if you're a good contractor. And the expectation is for Wing D to be completed by the end of March. We'll coordinate with the campus and the transition in getting them, some folks moved into the new Wing D to free up a couple of portables that we're leasing so we can turn those over about, actually, three months earlier than expected. That'll save us a few bucks. That's always nice. There'll be a part of the cafeteria stage we'll be able to turn over a little bit earlier in April. And by doing that, we'll give them a very good head start on the Phase Five, which is the cafeteria renovations and that'll be taking place in the summer. At Harmony Elementary School, we're well into Phase Four. They've completed the vast majority of the work there. As you can see on the left there, you have a typical classroom. I brought my pointer this time. I like using this because the way I shake my handshakes, it makes Judy nauseous by the end of the. So you have a typical classroom on the left and really nice tile work that's gonna be in the hallway with the drinking fountain. You can see all the ceilings are done, all the work is installed for the most part, as far as the whiteboards and all the other detailed work. The floors are polished. Right now, they're just finishing up a variety of things. They'll have Phase Four. They'll have the final inspections towards the beginning of April and we'll start moving into those areas by mid-April. That'll give us a head start in some areas over where they're gonna be doing some really major work in the library, computer lab, and admin areas over the summer. But by them moving forward and by us being able to work with them to move people into those new areas and give them the others early, they should be able to continue to go forward in a very positive way. Con Valley, there'll be a very similar story here. You have a typical classroom on the left. You can see it's pretty well complete. They finished the ADA ramp on the right here. That was a major accomplishment because for years and years, that was never, not only was it not ADA accessible, but it was also kind of a life safety issue just because of the way we had, literally had barbs out there for doors to keep people out, not so much to keep people in. Those west classrooms that are just illustrated are gonna be done at least a month early. We'll be turning those over in April. Campus will begin to move into those areas by mid-April. And by the beginning of, end of April, they'll start being able to take over some of the classrooms for Phase Five and the restrooms, most importantly, the work in the restrooms. And then by around the twentieth, if I recall, of May, they're gonna be able to get the library a little bit early and that will help them get a head start on that as well. And then work on the cafeteria to finish that out over the summer. Sinclair Elementary, you have Phase Four. Once again, they have most, all of the above-ceiling work complete. So you have their typical classroom. They've done the floor polishing, you can see in here, but they're still underway in other areas where they haven't completed that. Once they get that completed, they start doing the final paint. And so they're very close also with the others. They're a little bit behind some of the others, but they'll be completed also by mid-April and begin to turn that over so that we can begin to get some of the library and classrooms up in the head front of the building, turned over to them a little bit earlier than expected so they can get a jump on that. And then they have major work in the admin renovation up in the, over the summer. So we're very optimistic about that as well. John Glenn, you have the football or the, what looks like. John Glenn, you have the football, or the, what looks like a football field, but the parking lot that's been completed. And that'll, this is a view from the band tower that's over there, it's pretty exciting going up there. You can see on the right, you have the shop and that does not, if you recall what the gym looked like over there in that area, it's totally transformed that location. It's going to be a very attractive building as well as being very functional. This is just a panoramic view, I thought was pretty cool. Just want to make sure the principals understand, it really isn't curved like that, it's just a result of the talk. You have the library, they've completed the work in the library, we had some minor renovations there. You can see on the right, the restrooms are all done except for the partitions. Those will be coming in on Monday and should be getting installed. So they're also making very good progress. The expectation is for them to be turning that over no later than the end of April, although they had until June to do that. But that's, that's once again working out very well. ECDC, if you recall, last time we were looking at, we went through the design development phase, we looked at additional review of the project scope in February and we did determine that it's going to be more cost effective to do most of this work in-house or to just do our own subcontracting out. It's not extensive work, it'll be a savings to the district and it'll still get done over the summer. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Selby?
What does it mean more cost effective to be done in-house?
Well, you don't have to pay the overhead cost of the general contractor supervising the project. The ECDC right now, what we're going to be looking at primarily is making the restrooms up to an adult standard instead of the little 12-inch toilets. We'll have a more standard 15-inch toilet in there so everybody doesn't have to use little bitty toilets. And some painting, replacing some carpet. That's primarily what we're looking at doing.
So we're going to, we're going to sub that work out, but we're going to manage it?
Yes, sir. We're going to do the plumbing part ourselves, it's not that large of a scope and our plumbers are more than capable of doing that. That'll save, quite honestly, thousands of dollars just doing that in-house. The carpet, we can subcontract that out and the painting as well ourselves and probably get a better price.
Jim, on the, on the warranty work from Guido at Tradition and the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, sir.
Is that work that they have to perform or are they just managing that work again?
It depends on what it is. Some of it's self-performing, if it's more of an architectural type thing, if it's just small repairs, they have people on, in their own staff that go in and just take off a broken item and replace it. If it's more involved and requires a trade, then the subcontractors have to come in and do that work. And that's part of the contract we have with Guido and Guido's contract with those subs.
Okay, so it's not a manufacturer warranty thing, it's a, it's a Guido warranty thing?
Some of them are manufacturers, but since it all goes through Guido, they have to, they're responsible for making sure it gets done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to item F, upcoming events.
Trustees in your miscellaneous calendar, March and April, wanted to point to a few things. This Saturday, as mentioned last month, the 23rd is the 10th Annual Sarah Streisner Scholarship Fundraiser. It'll be the, the last fundraiser of this nature, which as you know, supported scholarships for many East Central students, but also many students from surrounding school districts. After this year, I believe Donna's family is going to pass that to the next generation, Sarah's cousins, and they're going to make it quite a bit smaller, but all of the focus will be for scholarships for just East Central ISD graduates. So it's a big event, it's at the Laverneya Chamber of Commerce. Again, a lot of funds are raised and many of those proceeds do benefit East Central ISD graduates. And I know that many of you already have tickets and plan to attend, but I just wanted to point that out. In April, very busy, as is always the case in the spring. On the 4th of April, that's a Thursday evening, our theater program is well into the one-act play competition season and they will be actually performing their one-act play show at the Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts at 4:45 on April 4th. Our gala, Foundation Gala, is on the 6th of April in Florsville. If you've not already secured tickets or, or seats for that, let me know and I'll assist you with that. On the 10th of April is the Winter Sports Banquet and I believe that's, is that going to be in the, in the Performing Arts Center as well, Mr. McKay? Again? Okay. That shows it starts at 6 o'clock. We'll have a goal-setting workshop, a special meeting on the 11th and we'll start that at That's the 11th, April 11th, Wednesday. I'm sorry, it's a Thursday.
It's in the.
Yes, sir, it's in your calendar. The high school will have its first Honor Society induction in the Patterson. It's 7 o'clock on the 15th, so I think that that would be a really nice event, particularly being in that facility for the first time. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 18th and then there's a school holiday on the 19th, Friday the 19th, as well as a school holiday for Battle of Flowers on the 26th. So back-to-back Fridays there, students have holidays. Happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the items in the March and April
Okay, we'll move to agenda item six, our action agenda. Item A is District of Innovation.
Trustees in your electronic packet, beginning on page 33, you'll see the District of Innovation Plan. If you'll recall, back in December, at the board's direction, we formed a committee. The committee is listed on page 33 in your electronic packet, which is in the plan. All those that were members of the committee, which included teachers, parents, campus administrators, district administrators, a really nice broad committee of representing the entire district. And they did some research on all of the things that were available for district consideration as part of the innovative plan and they brought forward some items for consideration. The Commissioner of Education was also notified in January of the district's intent. And then in January, the draft plan was posted for public comment for 30 days. And then throughout that period, as we received feedback, we generated a frequently asked questions document and then made some adjustments to the, to the plan. On March 5th, we brought that plan to the District Executive Education Improvement Council. Again, that DEIC is an advisory committee to the superintendent and district leadership team and that represents every single campus in the district. And they reviewed the plan, we took the feedback that they gave and then they voted on whether to bring that plan forward for your consideration. That is a requirement per statute and they must, they must pass that plan by majority vote, which they did. And so what we're bringing for your consideration tonight is the plan after that entire process. Wanted to point, or rather to highlight the things that the committee is asking for in the plan. Again, it's called a District of Innovation Plan, that's TEA's name for it, but really what it is, rather than being really innovative, is it allows for some flexibility from some statutes that may inhibit us from being as efficient and ultimately as effective as, as we might otherwise be. And so the first area that is being requested is some latitude around teacher certification. Now, the district has zero intentions of not seeking to hire certified teachers to fill our vacant positions, but there are in some cases, some areas where a little bit of flexibility might allow us to enrich the quality of the teacher in front of our students. So some examples of that would be in career and technology. In our career and technology courses, you're required to both be qualified in that area, but also teacher certified. And one example I would give you is that, you know, if we, if we were to have a vacancy for a drafting position, we might find somebody who graduates from college, has a little bit of background in drafting, maybe no industry or field experience as an architect, but they're teacher certified. Contrast that with perhaps a recent retired practicing architect who's not teacher certified, who's a more qualified person to teach our kids about architecture. And so in these cases, we might find ourselves finding a more qualified person who's coming from the industry in real time with industry experience, who is probably more qualified to train kids in career and technology-based programs that we could bring in and certify them. So that would be one example. Other than bilingual and special education, sometimes there's some high demand, hard to fill areas that we, we may not have a certified teacher to fill at that particular time and it gives us the ability to review background education and possibly put somebody in a classroom with the stipulation that they would have up to three years to earn that certification. So a high demand, hard to fill area in some instances, instances could be something like calculus. Maybe you don't have somebody qualified in your, in your pool of applicants, which this is not a great example because we've always had certified calculus teachers. But perhaps you have someone who, who graduated with an engineering degree and chose to go into education, but they're not teacher certified. So they obviously have the math background to teach the course, but they haven't earned teacher certification. This might be a way in that case to get them in the classroom sooner than later because they have the academic background that supports that they're qualified to teach the content while obtaining their teacher certification. Another example is that sometimes we have things happen in the middle of the year and in the gap between trying to fill a position that may be vacated in the middle of the year, rather than putting a substitute in that class, you might have another teacher on your staff that, that has maybe degree back, some coursework, a background, and they might be able to teach one class period outside of their certification area. So an example that I use with the DEIC is, as a teacher, I was a biology teacher, but I was also certified to teach integrated physics and chemistry, but I wasn't certified to teach chemistry, just integrated physics and chemistry. Had a lot of science courses in my, in my college background. If perhaps there was a need to teach one section of chemistry, instead of putting a substitute in there, they might put me in there in the interim. So this would allow us to, to maybe create some conditions where we can put a more highly qualified person in a classroom situation where we're maybe having difficulty to fill that position at that particular time. So again, the priority, as has always been the case, is to find highly certified and highly qualified people, but this gives us a little bit of flexibility. The second area is with regard to probationary contracts. Currently in Texas, if you are hired by a district and you have five, at least five years of previous experience, you're afforded a one-year probation, a one-year probationary contract. So what that means is that if you come in and you, and you have an okay year, but not a great year, the district has to make a decision at the end of that year to give you a term contract or to non-renew you. And sometimes we have teachers who come from other districts who have taught a different curriculum, use different instructional models, and they're coming to learn and develop and understand how we do things here. So they're growing and they're getting better, but they're not there yet. Currently, without the ability to extend an additional probationary year, we usually opt to non-renew because it's not worth the risk of extending the term contract. This would allow us the latitude, if in the event the teacher is growing and we feel like they just need another year to bake, that we could do that. Another area that we're looking to get a little flexibility on is with regard to intra-district transfers. This speaks to students who may come to our schools, but don't live in the district. Now, we generally don't have intra-district transfers, but when we do, by statute, once you enroll them, they have to stay a year, a full year. Problem with that is sometimes, in rare cases, kids, kids might not be coming to school, they may have truancy issues, or they may get into some severe issues with behavior. This allows the district to determine if because of behavior, because of truancy, they're not meeting our standard, that we don't have to wait a year. We can withdraw them even if they're an intra-district transfer. So it gives us a little latitude from that statute. Another area is with regard to the First Day of Instruction. We're all familiar with the law that has been put in place for a few years now that says that school cannot start before the 4th Monday in August and it cannot end before May 15th. Many challenges with that, particularly with regard to what's in the best interest of students academically. It, it creates a significant imbalance in the length of our semesters and it, it shortens the number of days before state accountability testing with regard to the number of days we have for instruction for students. And so this allows the option to consider other alternative school calendars. And so in anticipation of the possibility of this plan being approved by the board, we did go through an exercise this year in developing our calendar options to, to create four different options. Of course, there is no option other than the same calendar that we're on this year if the board doesn't approve the District of Innovation. So we'll talk more about the calendar in, in another agenda item. With regard to class size, in the, in elementary school, class size is 22 to 1. Currently, if you exceed 22 to 1, you just have to submit a waiver to TEA. It's not for approval, it's really just for notification and that just delays the process. What we're asking for is to continue the processes that we've always used to maintain that ratio, but understanding that from time to time, circumstances are such that we may exceed that ratio. And when we do, we want to just notify the board and the community, but we don't want to have to go through the exercise of complying with statute that says you have to notify the commissioner, because that just delays our ability to continue moving forward. Two remaining areas. One of them deals with our School Health Advisory Council with regard to the SHAC, which is meant to ensure that our health education instruction matches community values. That community, that committee convenes throughout the year, but what we have found is that the things that they're addressing, we could address and meet the statutory requirements through other committees like the DEIC. And so rather than being required to have another committee, because what we're finding is that many of the folks that serve on these committees are also serving on many other committees and the attendance to the, on these is inconsistent at best, so it's kind of redundant. But we, we feel like this will give us the flexibility to meet the statutory requirements, but we don't have to meet as a SHAC. We can do it in a DEIC, for example. And then lastly, with regard to Chapter 37 or campus discipline, statute requires every campus to name one person as the designated behavior coordinator. Here in East Central ISD, we, we use a team approach to dealing with student behavior and we don't have one person that's designated as the behavior coordinator, or we would prefer by statute, we're supposed to designate one person. This would allow us to, to do it the way we prefer to do it and that say that, that we have a team that deals with discipline on every campus and the principal's ultimately responsible for that. So those are all the areas included in the plan. Again, this plan was created by a diverse representative group. It was put out for public comment for a month. Those comments were integrated into the plan. They were presented to the DEIC who voted on the plan and we're bringing that plan, this plan forward tonight for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. In regard to the one, the information that you shared about the SHAC.
Yes, ma'am.
When I was in Galveston, we, we, I was in a workshop and we, we talked about that and you may recall that I was at the birthing of that on a state level with PTA when we said that all schools needed that, that kind of thing. Anyway, my point is, and so something came up about making sure that there were enough parents on these committees and, and that kind of thing. Through the DEIC, is that, is that correct? And where you were looking at the redundancy of that, will that still, will the information still be channeled through SHAC so SHAC can get the credit for it or will you sort of dissolve SHAC and yet still meet the requirements?
So, so, yeah, so the, so the, the SHAC as a formal committee would be dissolved, but the makeup of the committee, those that would be on the committee, will be represented in another standing committee that we already have in place. So the function of SHAC will still operate, but it won't be a standalone committee. Or it gives us the option to do that, so.
So, so we still will have a SHAC committee?
We will, we will, yeah, but it won't be. We will, we will, yeah, but it won't be separate. It may be a component of the DEIC.
Okay, okay.
For example, in Taffey, if you want to, if I'm not saying that correctly, you can certainly straighten me out.
I mean, and you were clear saying that. I've just, again, having just come from that and had a conversation with other school boards that were looking at that and not, not meeting the requirement of why it was, and you know, I just, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure I, I was clear about what we were doing. Okay.
Any other questions?
So, in according, I, my questions don't always match with what my mind's thinking, but my, the people that already oversee these categories, like for instance, the certification requirement and all that kind of stuff, will that, this play into their existing role? They'll, they'll be in charge of, you know, like it says here, the superintendent, campus principal will submit to the superintendent, blah, blah. So when everybody's hired, all that will still go through the same hiring process? Those people will just assume this new innovative role, more or less, is what I'm trying to say?
So, no- nothing changes. What it does is, is we try to solve quality challenges with regard to staff. It gives us other options to consider on the menu, with the singular goal being put the best, most highly qualified person in front of our kids, given that situation. And so, this just gives us a few more options to ensure that we're more likely to do that. This is not to circumvent teacher certification, to make it easier to put bodies in there. This is to say, highly qualified, highly certified people are our first option, but sometimes, in difficult to fill circumstances, and in, in, in unique situations, we might be challenged to meet those requirements. And this gives us a little flexibility so that we're more likely to, to put a, a, a highly capable person in front of our kids, as opposed to maybe just a substitute in the pool.
So the same people that do this regularly will be handling all of this, even though it's different?
Nothing changes with our hiring processes.
And all that, okay.
Nothing changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I believe we're ready for your recommendations.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the District of Innovation local plan as presented.
We have a recommendation by the superintendent to accept the District of Innovation local plan. Chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Mulkey, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, item B, I'm sorry. Two-year extension of depository contract.
Trustees, per Senate Bill seven fifty-four, which was passed, or came into effect September one of two thousand seventeen, it allows for school districts to extend their depository contract for a total of, of three two-year terms. And so, the district is eligible to extend the depository contract for a third two-year term with Wells Fargo. We met with Wells Fargo and they've agreed to continue to extend the same terms and conditions for their services, to include the rates that were previously, previously agreed to in the first two-year depository contract from two, two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. And so, what we will be bringing to you tonight for your consideration is to extend for that last two-year term, with all of the terms and conditions being the same as they were when we entered into the, into the relationship with Wells Fargo back in two thousand fifteen. And at the end of this two-year term, should you approve it, in two thousand twenty-one, we would go back out to the marketplace for proposals for depository contract services. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that as well.
Questions? Not? We're ready for your recommendations.
Okay, Mr. President, I recommend board approval for a two-year depository contract extension with Wells Fargo Bank to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to extend our depository contract with Wells Fargo. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Berrientos. Any other questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Item D, San Antonio ISD RDSPD Shared Service Agreement. Missed one? District calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, district calendar.
Yes, sir.
I checked off the wrong one. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, district calendar.
All right, so as I referenced prior, you'll notice in your electronic packet, you'll see two calendars. That was just in case you did not approve the District of Innovation. So, option four was also an option, and that's the same calendars this year. But now, we've got three other options that we presented to the community. We got, we had a broad community survey, was also online. We, we got feedback from the district leadership team, from each site-based decision-making committee at each campus. And we also took those results to the DEIC at the same time that we took the DOI plan for their consideration. And with all of that feedback, we found that the calendar that was listed as option two was the calendar that was preferred for next year, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. So before Taffey highlights some of the key changes, I will say that it, it does include sixteen staff development days, or teacher workdays, combination there, so that we can continue to ensure that we've got planning, adequate planning and prep days built into the calendar, which we've worked very diligently on the last few years. There's also only one early release date, which you guys are familiar with, the feedback that we use to determine that half-days were, were not good for the community and that they were really not very productive days. And so we got all of our early release days, our student half-days out of the calendar. The only one that's in there is the last day of school in this particular calendar. And the calendar allows us to meet all of our instructional minute requirements that statute requires of us. And so, at this time, Ms. Hertz will kind of walk you through the calendar. And again, that's on page forty-two, if you want to follow along.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. As Mr. Toscano was saying, the option two calendar is the one that received the most interest and on the survey that we did and from all the campuses. It was the one that had, had the majority of the people that preferred that. The biggest difference between what we have had for the last few years and this calendar is that it's, it's shifted up a week. So, the first day of school would be on August nineteenth, instead of August twenty-sixth, which is how it would have been if, if we had not done the District of Innovation. So everything is, is shifted up earlier by a week. New teachers would start on August first, everyone else would start on August seventh, and then students start on the nineteenth. It's the same number of staff development days prior to school starting that we have had. We still have all the quarterly planning days in and the data days that have been built in. A big difference is, though, we will end the fall semester before Christmas break. For many, many years now, we have had to go on Christmas break and then come back and have two more weeks in the first semester before we were able to finish it out. And that has presented some challenges with kids moving in, kids moving out, that sort of thing. So this will allow us to end the first semester before we go on Christmas break. It's still a little bit unbalanced as far as the number of days in the first semester and then the second semester, but the second semester is when we have all of the testing and everything, which takes away some instructional days anyway. So, it, it's still pretty balanced out. This calendar also allows us to finish before the beginning of June. It doesn't allow us to finish before Memorial Day, but pretty quickly after that, the, during the week after Memorial Day, which also is a benefit for our staff members that like, that need to go to summer classes to work on advanced degrees. It's a benefit for our students. Some of them that, that when they graduate, they want to go ahead and go into college right away, not wait over the summer. Colleges generally start that first week of, of June for the summer. So, this calendar would allow us that flexibility to do that. Other than that, it's pretty much the same as what we have had for the last several years. As Mr. Toscano said, it's a hundred and seventy-one instructional days, sixteen staff development days. You did approve the staff development waiver last month. That gives us an additional twenty-one hundred minutes to work with, but even without that, we meet the requirements for the minutes. So I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions? I think we're good.
Sorry, my only question was, we only, we were to approve the District of Innovation, right? We don't, and then notify the commissioner of approval?
Yes.
And then that, that allows us to vote on the change calendar?
So the fact that, yeah, the fact that the board approved it allows us to vote on the change calendar? This requirement's just that we notify the commissioner as a follow-up. We notified them that we were doing it? Yeah, now we're just notifying them that the board approved it.
Yeah, the commissioner doesn't have to approve it. Just you, you approve it and we let him know.
Okay, anything else?
On the calendar too, the last day of school is the twenty-eighth, am I right?
The twenty-eighth. And then the twenty-ninth is a workday.
And it's a workday, another calendar, the last day of school would be the third.
Oh, yes, on the, on the one, the option fourth, yes, it would be the third.
Any other questions?
I recommend board approval of option two for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty district calendar as presented.
All right, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept school district calendar option two. Chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Mulkey, is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Massengill. Any other questions, comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, item D, San Antonio ISD RDSPD Shared Service Agreement.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, this item is related actually to the next three. And so, if you'll recall back to January, we dissolved our RDSPD as a result of Region Twenty dissolving themselves as the fiscal agent for the program. Just to kind of a reminder, we were in a shared service arrangement where Region Twenty was the fiscal agent, and several districts participated to serve the students in all of our districts who require deaf education services. With Region Twenty collapsing theirs, Region, San Antonio ISD is now taking that program on and is the fiscal agent, and some twenty-five districts to include us intend to enter into that partnership. And so, previous to this partnership, SAISD, if you'll recall, served the deaf education students through eighth grade, and we served them in ninth through twelfth grade. With this new partnership that you'll be considering tonight, our students who are in SAISD, we have three currently, would just continue to stay in SAISD and attend Highlands High School, and would not come over to East Central High School. Currently, at East Central High School, we don't have any students from East Central that were serving in the program. So, should you approve this tonight, it wouldn't have any effect on any of our students. And in addition to that, should you not approve it tonight, we wouldn't be able to serve our deaf education students who do reside in our system. So we would be able to do that through this shared service agreement.
Any questions?
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the San Antonio ISD Regional Day School Program for the Deaf, Shared Service Agreement as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the San Antonio ISD RDSPD Shared Services Agreement. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Ms. Brazil, is there a second?
Aye.
I have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions, comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, consider and take possible action to declare that the necessity of program changes exist, requiring the non-renewal of district employees.
So related to this, trustees, since we will no longer have an RDSPD program, this particular item is asking the board to call a program change, which is essentially acknowledging that we will be changing a particular program. In a subsequent item, we'll, we'll be actually naming the RDSPD. So the way that the process has to work statutorily is the board just first has to call a program change. So that's what this particular item is. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Any questions?
I move, the board, the board determines that there is a necessity of program changes requiring the non-renewal of district employees based on reasons including elimination, curtailment, or reorganization of a program, department, school operation, or curriculum offering, including, for example, a change in curriculum objectives, a modification of the master schedule, the restructuring of an instructional delivery method, or a modification or reorganization of staffing patterns district-wide.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to declare program change requirements for a deaf ed program. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions, comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, consider and take possible action to determine the employment areas to be affected as a result of the program changes requiring the non-renewal of district employees.
Trustees, this step in the procedure requires that I make a recommendation for board consideration and name the specific program that we're referring to with regard to the change. So if you don't have any questions, I'll offer that recommendation. Whereas the board has previously determined that a need for program changes exists, requiring the non-renewal of employees, I move that the board determine the employment area to be affected by the program changes resulting in the non-renewal of district employees, include the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the program changes as presented to the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf. Chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Massengill, is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Mulkey. Any questions, comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, consider and take possible action regarding proposed non-renewal of term contract employees.
So trustees, this particular program change affecting the RDSPD program affects three employees, who are all deaf education teachers, two full-time, and one part-time. So previously, as they were our employees, we received funding from the fiscal agent to serve students from ECISD as well as all member districts in this program. And so, at this particular time, it is my obligation to name the three employees who would be affected, and subsequently, not, their, their contracts recommended for non-renewal as a result of the program change in this specific program. We fully anticipate that these employees would be considered for the RDSPD program in SAISD, but we don't have control over that. But we also have and intend to continue to extend options for these employees, should they choose and be interested to express interest and apply for any available positions in the district that they are qualified for.
Would they be considered, have the first option if, if they can decide that they want to stay for any job that comes open? Would they be considered first?
They would, they would definitely be considered for any positions that they are, that they are qualified for, yes, sir. And, and I believe all of them are special education certified. It may be an assumption, is that correct, if it? So, it is a special education certification with a deaf education. Is that a certification or specialty? Okay. So they, they are very much in high demand. And so, should they decide, decide to stay with us, they would definitely receive that consideration, for sure. All right, Mr. President, trustees, I move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of Patricia F. Hefflin. to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of Patricia F. Hefflin, Leslie Lizalde, and Natasha K. Rosas based on application of the reduction in force criteria under the program change, and further move that the board direct the superintendent to give written notice to Patricia F. Hefflin, Leslie Lizalde, and N- Natasha K. Rosas that the board proposes not to renew, uh, the co- their con- their term contracts for the succeeding school year.
Thank you. We have mo- we have a recommendation to the superintendent to non-renew employees in our deaf ed program and to direct the superintendent to, and inform them of the non-renewal. Chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Massengale. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Presses. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have a, an item pulled from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to have item B pulled.
All right. I have a request from Mr. Massengale to pull the item B, consideration and approval to engage Specialized Public Finance Incorporated as the district financial advisor. Mr. Toscano.
So we're in the consent?
We're in the consent agenda, consent agenda, item B. We're going to pull that and then we'll deal with the rest of the consent agenda. We're going to take that as a separate item, then we'll do our normal consent, unless somebody wants a di- another item pulled. All right.
Uh, trustees, if you look in your miscellaneous packet, you'll see a handout titled East Central Independent School District. It's a firm overview. It's a little short packet. And, uh, what this is regarding is, uh, that the district is seeking to change financial advisors. Um, our, if you'll recall, our financial advisor, Victor Carroga Junior, uh, has been with us for many years. Uh, he provides services related to structure, sales, and refunding of construction bonds. Um, he is now in ge- he is now with Specialized Public Finance. Um, and he would continue to do that along with providing studies of the district's, uh, debt structure, assist in the structuring of bonds, and obtain competitive bids for services rendered in the issuance, sale, and delivery of the obligation and other related services while serving as the district's financial advisor, uh, which is exactly what he's been doing for us. In fact, um, as you know, Victor's been with us since two thousand and one, um, while at his previous firms, um, serving the district in that role. Um, he has assisted the district on fourteen bond issues as well as produced bond refinance savings in the nine million-plus range. Um, he's also assisted the district to achieve two bond rating upgrades, um, during the time he's been with us in this role. Um, Victor is actually with us tonight, and he would be more than happy to provide the, the board with additional information about specialized public finance, if you would, uh, like him to do that.
Come on up, Victor.
That's not a good way to start. Honorable President, members of the board, Mr. Toscano, thank you for having me here this evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Victor Carroga, and I'm now with, uh, Specialized Public Finance. I've had the honor of representing the school district as financial advisor since I started my career in two thousand and one. And the, um, there's been a continuity of service, uh, even before I joined the industry in two thousand and one through my mentor and former boss, uh, Steve Elliott, who some of you may, uh, remember. And so the relationship spanned since the mid-nineties, um, and, um, I'm here to humbly ask that we could continue the relationship. Um, the Specialized Public Finance is a wonderful firm. It's, uh, ranked number two out of all the financial advisor shops in the state of Texas. And when you look at, um, a firm like ours, we're considered an independent financial advisor, meaning that we don't, uh, push or sell any other financial advisory services. All we do is focus on our clients because we have fiduciary responsibility as financial advisor to the school district. And so this is the only, uh, service that we, um, uh, 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 tend to our clients. Uh, the firm was started in two thousand and eight by six other advisors who came from a, a firm called First Southwest. Um, since that time, uh, they've conducted about thirteen hundred transactions for about seventeen billion dollars. Uh, before me arriving two weeks ago, the firm already represented four hundred governmental entities in the state of Texas, uh, with respect to school districts. Uh, we had, um, started off at thirty-five, and my couple, past couple of weeks, we were able to add an additional five. And so now we're over eighty school districts here in the state of Texas. Uh, we've done about two hundred and thirty-six transactions for about seven billion dollars, uh, for Texas schools. And so I had the honor of, uh, joining Specialized Public Finance, again, uh, one of the top financial advisor firms. Um, a- a- and really, um, the only, the only change, uh, that's going to be impacted to the district is the fact that I have a new phone number and a new email address. Uh, the service that the staff, uh, has received from myself and my team, including Rachel Reyes, who conducts mostly the annual reporting, uh, for the district, uh, that's, everything's going to stay the same. Uh, I just, um, ended up joining a firm that specializes more, more on what I do for the district, and that's being financial advisor, uh, to, uh, the school district. And really, my main job at the end of the day is try to get you the best interest rate possible so that you could impact, uh, taxpayers as less as possible. Um, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have on the firm or, or me.
Any questions?
How long's the firm been around, Victor?
Uh, since two thousand and eight, and I'm actually one of the younger ones there. I've, I've been doing this eighteen years. Uh, on average, the advisors have about twenty-two years. Um, uh, the senior partners, uh, range from twenty-six to thirty-three years, uh, that they've been advising. And that's one of the things that attracted to me is the fact that there'll be other peers with me as financial advisors who do what I do on a daily basis, but just have been doing it for a, a longer period.
Okay. So it says here you're managing director. Does that mean that you're not going to be as closely involved with us?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. That's just a, that's just a fancy title. I still work for you, uh, one-on-one. And so you're still going to, uh, see me and hopefully, uh, more often than not, because I enjoy being here and I enjoy working for you.
Okay. Because it doesn't say East Central Independent School District Managing.
Yes.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Are they, y'all based in San Antonio? Where's your?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry to, it went, kind of went over that. Uh, so basically, we're headquartered out of Austin. Uh, we have, uh, an office in Dallas and Amarillo, and I had the honor of, uh, opening up their San Antonio office because my wife wouldn't have it any other way. And so, uh, the good thing is I was able to open up the office, uh, a lot closer to my home. Uh, and don't have to contend with traffic much, uh, because we're on the road quite a, as, you know, a lot anyway. And plus my assistant who joined me, Rachel Reyes, who's been with me for about thirteen years. It's closer to her house, too. So it's just a, it's just a convenient all the way around. And, uh, again, I'd, um, love the opportunity to continue to represent the district.
All right.
Well, I think Victor's, uh, reputation with us speaks for itself, and I'm great, grateful that we have the opportunity to continue working with you if the board deems necessary, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're ready for a recommendation.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the attached contract for a three-year financial advisory agreement with Specialized Public Finance Incorporated as presented.
All right, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the attached contract for three-year financial advisory agreement with Specialized Public Finance Incorporated. Chair will entertain a motion.
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Massengale. We have a second by Ms. Berrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I feel a lot better, mostly better tonight, and it's just an honor to be a part of the team. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Victor. All right, we'll now move back to, uh, the consent agenda. Uh, chair will entertain a motion to pres- to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Massengale. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. All right, our next agenda item is an executive session. So I have to read this exciting notice. Board of Trustees, on March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, beginning at eight twenty P M, convened in a closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one and five-five-one point zero-eight-two-one, deliberation and consultation with school attorney regarding pending litigation and possible settlement of student v. East Central Independent School District before a special education hearing officer for the state of Texas, docket number zero-nine-zero dash S E dash one-one-eight. Thank you. All right. The board ended its closed meeting at eight forty-three P M. On March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, no action was taken in the closed meeting. Item ten A, consideration and possible action concerning pending litigation and possible settlement of student v. East Central Independent School District before a special education hearing officer for the state of Texas, docket number zero-nine-zero dash S E dash one-one-eight.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the school's attorney and direct the superintendent and the school's attorney to proceed and discuss in closed session concerning student versus East Central Independent School District before a special education hearing officer for the state of Texas, docket number zero-nine-zero dash S E dash one-one-one-eight.
I have a motion by Ms. Berrientos. Is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, adjournment. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. We have a second. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone.